Welcome everybody here tonight. Before we get started officially, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jeff Kane with C-3 Church of Milton. Please lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, I thank you right now, God, that we're able to put our work aside, that we're able to put our lives aside for just a moment, Father, and invite you into this place. God, you ask us in Timothy, you say to pray for our leaders, to pray for the ones you've put into power. So, God, we take a moment right now to pray for the city council, to pray for this mayor, God, that your Holy Spirit would guide them, Father, in wisdom, in patience, God, in gentleness, God. God, let them do what you would have them do. Let them plan as you would have them plan, God. Let your kingdom come in this place, in this city, in this country, God, just like it is in heaven. Father, we thank you for all the things you're going to do in this place. We thank you for each and every person in this meeting. And, God, we pray, of course, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, May 7th, 2012, to order. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 7th, 2012, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longgoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the City Clerk please sound the first item?
The first item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 12-098.
Okay. Do we have any changes from staff?
Tonight, I'm going to need executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay.
And I also pass out to you a correction to your agenda packet for the YMCA. I made an error in the commission rate. It is now 10 percent as it should have been. It was listed as 30 percent in your agenda packet.
Okay. All right, any other items? Council have any changes? If not, do I have a motion on the amended agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the agenda as adjusted and modified by staff.
I second that.
Okay. I've got a motion by Councilmember Longgoria, a second by Councilmember Large to add executive session to discuss land acquisition and also to acknowledge the updated paperwork with commissions from Mr. Rebar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, I'm going to move on to public comment, but do we have any public comment cards?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. And let's move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item is approval of the April 9th, 2012, regular council minutes, agenda item number 12-099. Next is approval of the April 16th, 2012, work session minutes, agenda item number 12-100. Third, we have approval of a professional services change order between the City of Milton and BM&amp;K PC for right-of-way services, State Route 372 at Providence Road and State Route 140 at New Providence Road, agenda item number 12-101. Next, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Milton and the City of Roswell for the periodic use of a motor grader, agenda item number 12-102. Fifth, approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Mike Westmoreland Contracting, Inc., for the renovation of the infield at Hopewell Middle School, the amount of $5,310, agenda item number 12-103. Next, approval for consent to assignment of construction easements and right-of-entry between Fulton County Board of Education and the City of Milton, agenda item number 12-104. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., and the City of Milton for intersection improvements at the Bethany Bend-Cogburn Road intersection, agenda item number 12-105. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following plaits: Six Hills HOA revision, revised property lines between common area and Lot 1, Milton Preserve revision, add easement for landscape at entrance, the heart of Crab Apple Minor Plat, divide into two lots, Interquest Church combo plat, combine three lots into one, Roxbury Estates revision, change to private streets, Hidden Forest revision, revised property lines and setbacks according to V10-017 and ZM10-02. The Manor, final plat, add two lots, Kingsley Estates Phase 1-2A, final plat, add six lots. This is agenda item number 12-106.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion on this, I did notice on the screen it showed on the Six Hills HOA revision, called a property lot number seven, and I believe that's number one, as you stated.
That has my chance.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion, a second?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
I'm second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Luss, a second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Tonight, there are no items on reports and presentations, first presentation, public hearing, or the zoning agenda, or unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. Will the City Clerk please sound those items?
Mr. Mayor, before we start that, what I'd ask maybe that you would allow tonight is allow the clerk to sound items 1 through 10. Allow us to make one presentation as it relates to 1 through 10, and then we'll obviously have to vote on them individually, but I think there's one presentation that goes with the first 10 items.
Okay. Sounds good.
First item is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and YMCA of Metropolitan Atlanta, agenda item number 12-107. Approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Off-Broadway Expressions, agenda item number 12-108. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Kim Saunders Yoga LLC, agenda item number 12-109. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Overkill Volleyball, agenda item number 12-110. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Sverber Music, agenda item number 12-111. Approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Eric Snow Sports, agenda item number 12-112. Approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Newtown Recreation, agenda item number 12-113. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Agape Academy LLC, agenda item number 12-114. Approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Core Physique LLC, agenda item number 12-115. And last, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Eagle Sticks Lacrosse, Inc., agenda item number 12-116. Mr. John Rebar.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, today's an exciting day parks and recreation-wise for the City of Milton, because we're showing some real growth in our facilities and in our programs. Before I get into the programs that are in front of you tonight, what's triggering this is we have some new facilities coming online through some of the IGAs that you approved last year. This summer, there's going to be renovations to the Cockburn Woods Elementary School field, the Birmingham Falls Elementary School field, the Hopewell Middle School field, and the diamond-shaped field at Hopewell Middle School. All of these improvements are going to expand the recreational use for the City of Milton, combined with what we already have online. As a result, out of the 10 contracts in front of you, it's going to result in 32 new program offerings. And again, it's offerings. We're going to find out what works and what our residents want, and one way you find that out is by offering it and see if the people come. So, it's going to be a... In addition to that, we're also doing a movie series this summer, three new movies, which will be at Northwest Middle School. We're working on that, Northwestern Middle School, we're working on that right now. But some of the offerings you're going to see are some tennis. We're looking for doing tennis programming both at Hopewell Middle School and Northwestern Middle School. My remote's not working, so if you could advance, David. We're also doing some more offerings at Bell Memorial Park, using all the schools, as you could see on your monitor, for different things like flag football, lacrosse, basketball leagues. Using the Bethwell Community Center, it's rented right now and it's programmed a little bit. We're really looking to advance those program offerings by going with dance classes, maybe some art classes, babysitting training through the YMCA, youth CPR, and looking... Please advance. And looking to expand our programming to music, camps, drama. So, we're going to see throughout the whole year, different programs come up at all these different facilities. Another progressive step... One more slide, please. Another progressive step in our offerings is we need to change the way that we market it. Next slide, please. And tomorrow, what we're launching is through Jason Wright, he's created now a Parks and Recreation Activity Guide. Before, we were doing individual program flyers and some email blasts. Now, we have enough offerings that we can put together a seasonal guide. Next slide, please. And this is a draft in front of you, and it will have some information about our facilities. Next slide. It will have programs, information, just like you've seen from other cities, YMCA's, other counties, and different cities, where our programs, our camps, next slide, special events, and that will also help get the word out, let your residents know, and visitors, what is Milton offering? Where is it at? And then, with all the necessary contact information. So, again, it's an exciting day, and as this department grows into providing more and more recreation opportunities. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think with that presentation, then we'll go back and individually go through each of these contracts.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if you want to do that, fine. I just talked with Ken, and there is a way. You don't have to go through that pain if you don't want to, if he would explain it. Mr. Mayor, procedurally, if the council wants to take all of these agreements at one time, then I would request a motion to do that. In other words, a motion to handle these multiple agenda items as one item, that would be one motion. You approve that, and then your next vote will be to approve all of them. You could do that as well.
So, it would be a motion to approve all the first 10 items on the new business.
And call out the... Yeah, call out the agenda item, you know, just the numbers, and that would be fine.
Okay. All right. Open up the floor to... I took a motion.
Actually, I was going to make a comment. John, you know, you've been here all but, you know, not too long, okay? And this amount of work and the stuff that you guys are doing, just it's real good stuff for the city. I'm real pleased to see, not only the use of all the different facilities that we have access to, I mean, we've spent a lot of time up here, you know, getting specific IGAs in place and stuff like that, so this is all great news. I really appreciate all the work and effort.
Thank you. And I'd like to... Tom Gillan was in the audience. He's the program coordinator. He's been working hard with all these potential contractees. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 12-107, agenda 12-108, 12-109, 12-110, 12-111, 12-112, 12-113, 12-114, 12-115, 12-116, and that we vote on all those items at the same time.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Thurmond, a second by Councilmember Koontz to vote on all items on our... Listed on our agenda from items 1 through 10 as one motion. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
It is. Followed along, yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And now, we'll need your actual action along. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I'll open up the floor for a motion, a second, to vote on all of the items that we just listed.
Mr. Mayor, I vote that we are making a motion to accept all of the items by the Parks and Recreation Program as presented to us this evening.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Koontz, a second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion? Only thing is, again, kudos to Mr. Rebar and Tom for all the hard work, so this is exciting.
Hand to Jason for the program.
Hand to Jason, yeah. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we can move on to the next. Please say the next item, for the City Clerk. Item number 11.
Mr. Carter Lucas, approval of a construction services agreement between Hitsen Construction, Inc., and the City of Milton for the replacement of the Cogburn Road Bridge, agenda item number 12-117. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, as stated, this is a construction services agreement for the bridge replacement down for the... By the Little Bridge, St. Francis School. This project does a couple of things, mainly, primarily, to replace the existing structure that's deficient down there, but also allows us to expand that structure to some degree, improve the geometry down in that curve, and also allow for the continuation of the trail section from St. Francis on the St. Francis side of the road on up to the extents of the projects, which would be heading back towards Hopewell Middle. Not quite making that connection, but at least through this project section, we'll have the 10-foot-wide trail as called out in the Trail Master Plan. It also allows for a sidewalk on the east side, which won't be constructed under this project, but we'll have enough room to construct that in accordance with the Trail Master Plan, if and when that section of the trail or sidewalk is completed. In accordance with our standard procurement procedures, this project was bid out. Hitsen Construction was the low bid on this particular project, and staff is recommending approval of this contract. If so approved, notice proceed. We'll go to the contractor tomorrow, and we anticipate the road being closed from May 19th to August 3rd, back and open in time for school to start in the fall.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lucas on this bridge replacement contract? If not, do I have a motion, a second?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a construction services agreement to Hitsen Construction and the City of Milton for the replacement of the Cogburn Road Bridge, agenda item 12-117.
Second motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, and a second by Councilmember Luss on agenda item number 12-117 for the approval of construction services agreements between Hitsen Construction, Inc., and the City of Milton for the replacement of the Cogburn Road Bridge. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous.
Thank you.
We'll move on to council staff reports. Are there any council members that have a report?
I just want to say we had a great retreat. I really appreciate all the work that staff did on it, and I thought it was a very meaningful day and a half.
Thank you. I do, too.
Appreciate the work that we did get done, too.
It's good work.
Very productive.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll move on to staff. The reports.
You know, since in the last 48 hours, we've spent a day and a half together, I don't know that I have a lot to report on tonight that occurred yesterday. So, again, I'll echo the council members' comments. I think we got some good productive work done, and we've started to pull some of those top items off the wish list and at least put some plans around and meet them today. So, good stuff, but...
Okay.
Let's do executive session, if you don't mind.
Do I need a motion, a second, to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Large, a second by Councilmember Thurmond, to move into executive session to discuss land acquisition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.[1144.15]
Yes, and it finds its commercial will is that, thanks. It doesn't say the property is commercial but says.
Second.
First.
Second.
I've got a motion to reconvene the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Repose. That's unanimous. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so to move.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And that's unanimous.